I'd like to call the February 13 meeting to order. Will you please take attendance?
Chair Potista. Vice Chair Sandoval.
Present.
Commissioner Betts.
Present.
Commissioner Harrison.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Morgan.
Okay, next is the approval of the January 23 meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments on those? Nope, okay. Make those approved.
Were you going to excuse those two members or wait and see if they show up?
I was going to wait and see if they show up.
Okay.
Next is public comment. Is there any?
No one signed up in person. No public comment has been received by 4:00 PM today. If there's anyone in virtual audience would like to comment, please use hand raised tool. Going ones. Going two. Twice, sorry. Yeah. Chair Potista joined. That ends public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll go on to election of the planning commission chair and the vice chair. Do we? We want to have the elections or do you want to wait until there's more people? What do you guys think?
I second Danine's comment. I think we should wait.
Is that okay? Can we wait? The next meeting? Okay.
Miguel, I'm here. I don't know if you guys can hear me.
Yes. Yeah, we were told you were here.
Great, okay.
We're missing Commissioner Morgan.
Oh.
Okay, then we'll just move that down to miscellaneous and if, or another meeting, we'll check back. So now, let's move on to the introduction of the proposed amendments to engineering standards. Stormwater.
Let's try that again. Hi, I'm Rich Meredith. I'm our city traffic engineer. This meeting is our second installment in a series where we're trying to develop an engineering development manual. And we want to bring sections of this to the council, to, or the commission, to take a look at them, to see what we're doing, get any feedback. If you have any questions, you like the format, you like the way it's going. I guess we want to work together on this to try to come up with something before we adopt it, hopefully this summer. So at tonight's meeting, excuse me. Is there, there's a PowerPoint? There we go. Thank you. All right. Oh, sorry. Incho. It's not there. Try clicking on this. And then, where's the share on that? There you go. There we go. You can do this one and, you know, or there, yeah. Good. Thank you. Okay. So just to recap the overview on this, our current design requirements are scattered through the code. They're in some of the comprehensive plans and they're also in some of our standard details. And the purpose of putting together this document is to try to, one, make everything easier to find, kind of a one-stop shopping. There will still be some design requirements that we need to keep in code, but for the most part, we're trying to move everything to a separate document. We'll have to add something in the code that refers to this document. But once we've got our design document done, then we can make changes to it a lot easier than, instead of having to update the code every time we want to make a design standard change. So we see this as really going to make things more efficient. It's going to make it a lot easier for developers and the community to know and understand what they need, what the design standards are here in Mount Lake Terrace. So this document should help us do that. Which basically this slide says the same thing. The other objective of this process is to streamline the design and plan review process. We've heard some comments that it can take too long, especially when they're trying to get answers on different topics. And this is just, again, this is going to be really good for both city staff, so that we don't have to keep answering the same questions all the time, and for the developer community. So here's our proposed table of contents. And the order of these different sections is kind of to help walk somebody through the whole process. So that's why we start with permitting and then move on to construction and then streets, storm water, sewer, and then we're going to have a section on closeout at the end. So we're hoping to have all the information that people need in a logical order, so they'll be able to find things easily. Tonight's sections that we're talking about, we were going to do streets, but that's a pretty big section. So we decided to go with storm and water, just as there are little smaller sections. And again, we wanted to make sure that we're kind of on the right track. So that's what we've brought forward today is our storm and our water sections. This is the tentative schedule for our return visits. In a month, we hope to bring the water and the streets. Again, the street section is pretty big, so we're hoping to have that all ready to go then. If not, we might substitute construction or permitting. But our goal is to go through all the, present all these sections through the April 10 meeting, so that we can start having public comments in April. And so with that, here's kind of the questions that we were hoping we could get some feedback on. Is our proposed draft format, is that working for you? Are there any topics or thoughts that you think we should add? Or, and is there any concerns or questions about the preliminary schedule that we've outlined? So from there, I think I'm going to, do you want me to walk through it a little bit? Or have you guys had a chance to review this? How would you like to proceed?
Is this the schedule we saw last meeting?
Yeah. The only thing that changed was the, which topics were on which night.
I think it's good to start with something a little more slower paced. Oh, sorry, I overworked. Okay. I appreciate that, because, you know, it would be nice to know if we do wind up sort of going into overtime here. This meeting might be a good precursor to see just how much discussion these things might wind up needing to take. So I think it's a good, it's a good start here.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nick? Is he there? He's, he's on mute.
I'm good.
Okay. So is that, is that you?
Okay, yeah, I can briefly go through these sections and if somebody has any questions, then we can stop. So we'll start with stormwater section. The way we laid it out, we're going to, you know, first kind of describe the standards and what the design references are going to be and the process for doing some adjustments and variances. We've, the stormwater additional requirements, so we're following the Snohomish County and the Department Ecology stormwater manuals. We've added a little bit of language in here where we're going kind of above that. But, so these here are some areas, if you're familiar with the manual, that you'll want to maybe take a look at. We thought that these type of elements here are going to be more in line with some of the issues that we've seen here in Mount Lake Terrace that we want to address before they, before they can get to be a number of questions. You know, and I'm, I'm not sure which ones are, most of this is so new, it's like, I'm not actually sure where to, where to land on, but under the general requirements, this is our standard language for, the designers need to be professional engineers. See, I know some questions came up about maintenance access, number 20.6. We're trying to make sure that wherever we have facilities that we have to maintain, that we have some type of an easement, so we can always have maintenance in there, appropriately sized maintenance, so we can get our trucks in there. We added some language in here for subdivisions and phased projects. The phased projects might be something that comes up. We've ran into issues where some projects, instead of doing the whole thing at once and doing all their stormwater, they decide to do a small piece here and then another piece and then another piece. So there's a, we need to somehow address the cumulative effects of that. And so we put some language in here to try to address that.
Could you elaborate on that a bit more as how you're addressing cumulative impacts of development on our sort of overall total stormwater capacity?
The stormwater, the ultimate stormwater capacity, we're still going to have to meet that. But sometimes for the smaller projects, the requirements might not be as stringent. And so if you look at it from a cumulative standpoint, then, you know, that's when they'll have to maybe trigger some additional measures that they wouldn't necessarily have if you just looked at the individual parts.
Okay, and so this is, the scope of this is all private and public development then?
Yes, yes. Regional facilities, I, we, part of that, we have a regional facility that we built on site that we want to take advantage of. And I think we wanted to make sure that there's language in here to point that out. But I think with, one of the options that we're looking at for Main Street Phase Two is maybe to put in another detention vault with enough capacity to handle any future development. That's one of our thoughts, because if we can put in enough infrastructure for the future development, it might make it more attractive for town center to happen sooner than later, so. But we felt we needed to say something about regional facilities, just because that's just kind of our, our goal on it. We have language about our, our stormwater pollution prevention plans. I think we have that in some places already, but we wanted to try to get it into this document, because again, as those things evolve and change, this is going to make it easier to update it. We have language on conveyance systems, both the open channel and the pipe conveyance. There's a table 17 for section 22.2. This is our proposed design standards for clearances. And there's another one in here for, no, I think that one's it. Maybe it's the sanitary sewer. I'll touch on another one later, but we're trying to set our standards, so we're not right at the minimum. You know, with some pipe slopes, there's a minimum slope, but our target slope is going to be basically double that. Because with construction, there's a lot of, you know, ambiguities and when you come to build them, you can't get them very exact. And so if you have a maximum slope and you're designing to that, you may not get that in the field. So if you target something less than that, you see this a lot when we design curb ramps and sidewalks to meet ADA criteria. In the old days, it was designed to 2%, but that's the max. And so construction tolerances wouldn't let you meet that a lot. So we're doing the same thing with some of our pipe systems. And again, if somebody sees something that they want to chat about, just let me know. Let's go into the sanitary sewer. Yeah, table 18 is the minimum pipe slopes I was just talking about. We doubled what the minimums are, so that we're, we have something that's going to be a little more long-term. It's not going to be a problem for us, we hope, and it should be able to satisfy any tolerances in the construction technique. We have a section on connection to the public sanitary sewers, just to give some guidance for the, the single-family homes and everybody with that one. We're also, we have some language in here about manhole sizes and minimum sizes for the connections along the frontages. We were kind of silent on that and, you know, when you're, when you're building some of these long frontages, you need a bigger sewer, so you're not going to have as much of an issue with maintenance and cleanouts and such. Trying to think, oh, we put in a section on RV sewer. There's, that was something that you might want to think about too. I mean, we're seeing people with RVs and if we don't address that somehow, then the people will figure out how they want to do that. But if we can put something in here to help manage that, then we can get some consistencies on how that's handled. And basically, that's kind of a real rough overview.
So this document, is it completely new or is there parts of it that are new?
There are parts of it that are new. I want to say that overall, it's new, but there's language that we have taken from some of our existing standards and we've been incorporating it into this. So we've been using the, the original document as a template and then working our language into there.
I would just add, not that it's my department, but the most work that has been done recently has been done to our stormwater chapters. So that's really, I think, in the best shape as far as what you guys will be reviewing versus kind of gaps that we need to fill for the streets or for some of the other stuff. But since we have, we've had a stormwater manager in her position, I think Laura's been in her position more, refer like six years or over five years. And she's done a lot of toll work. So it's in pretty good shape, I think, which would agree with me, other than some tweaks.
Great. What, sorry, I have a lot of questions. I reviewed this a little bit before coming in, but it was more of a skim, so I apologize. So please feel free, I'm going to stop after every question if other people want to ask. I think to build on Danine's question, could you summarize like the substantial differences between this and the previous codes and collection of things that we had?
I can get back to you on that.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like this is a process improvement for sure, but if there's like substantial differences, it would be good to know. And then, I'm just curious, kind of, you know, there's numbers in the tables and you sort of talked about like the numbers of pipe slopes and things that are coming from that. But in terms of like sizing sanitary sewers and also sizing the, you know, stormwater facilities that we have, I'm curious sort of how those numbers come about. Is that something you typically, based on best engineering practice? Or are you hiring that out when there are changes? Or sort of how are those numbers derived?
The pipe sizes that I was chatting about earlier, that is based on our, our best practices and it's also based on best practices in the industry. So that's not something that we went to a consultant out. Our utility engineer, Roth, he's been doing this for the city for 20 years. And these are some of the design numbers that he is regularly giving to the consultants and the developers. But I don't think they were really codified in one spot. So this is a, a perfect example of something, we wanted to get it down on paper, so that we're still consistent.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
I know one of the topics that comes up when people talk about redevelopment and intensification of development, which is something we'll be working with here, is, you know, are the sewers sized appropriately for new development? In your opinion, how much new development could these standards support?
These, these standards are flexible and they can grow. You know, part of the, part of the, the nice part about the setup that we have is that we can expand it as we find that we need to. And I have to say that the original document had more stringent standards in here or a lot more detail that we have taken out for two reasons. One, there's topics that we think need more discussion. And if we want to keep this on a rather fast timeline to get something in place, we're going to hold off on the more controversial topics until we have a chance to really engage the larger community and stuff in it. So there, this document will grow and we're anticipating after we get this first one done, that we're going to immediately start working on version two for next year, that we've, that will probably be expanded.
Okay. So this is like intended to be a living document then, that we'll probably wind up reviewing every time there's a change in development?
Exactly.
Or a change in zoning or whatever else happens?
Yes.
Okay. Great. I'm going to pause there because other people might have questions and this is where I start having more questions, so.
You're doing fine. I like your questions.
Thank you.
The RV section, what is that going to, what is, what is that for exactly? I mean, explain that a little more?
My understanding is right now, we don't really have any standards on if people want to have an RV hookup at their house. And so if that's going to happen, which I think it's happening anyway out there, we wanted to at least have something in code that would standardize that a little bit, so we could have a little control over it.
That one kind of worries me, because, you know, if we make it easier for people to, I mean, are they going to, are people going to have motor homes, you know, and use it as a, to live in?
Well.
Which, and I bring it up because, I mean, there's a house kind of close to mine, you know, for years. And we know that there, you know, there's people living in a motor home right next to it. You know, and so if, you know, sewer is the hardest one, and so if we make it easier, you know, for them to get, you know, the water, you can bring a hose and electricity, all that, that just, it just kind of concerns me of.
No, that's a great topic. That's a great issue. And, you know, my thought with just having something in here is that if they had an RV then, and they wanted a hookup, this is how it would happen. Maybe the process is one that we should defer until we've had a chance to talk about it. Because there are some larger implications with putting that language in there. So we could certainly strike that for the moment and until we have a chance to talk about it some more.
I'm concerned about it. I don't know about.
Yeah, and I just want to say, I also know several, I guess you call them trade use. They're like trailers, eighties, that just kind of functionally wind up being like a place to live. And, but I have also seen like houses, when we were shopping for houses, I definitely saw at least one that had sewer hookup advertised as for, for like an RV. And I think there are a couple of instances where I think this would be useful. One is a lot of people do have RVs and, you know, if you don't want to stop at a dump station, like somewhere, you can dump at your own house instead of having to hide. And then, two, we actually do allow people to live in an RV for a couple of weeks of the year. And I do have neighbors whose parents come up and visit for a couple of weeks and stay in the RV and sort of watch the kids like in the driveway for a few weeks. So I think there are like instances where like, you know, it's not necessarily like a permanent hookup to a permanent facility, but it is like, you know, there are uses where I think a dump state, people might want to install a dump station. If we're not banning them outright, I think it would be worthwhile to have standards.
Well, it sounds as though what you're saying is, if we say nothing, then it's a wild, wild west. They'll do whatever they want. So if we at least start with some kind of foundation and that, you said this is a living document that a row. Yeah, we don't want, but Vice Chair Sandoval, instance to, you know, get out of hand either. But I think being silent on it is going to make people go, well, it says nothing, so I'll do whatever. See what it said exactly.
Yeah, I think that's like you have to have a lid on it and there's some, you might have to get a side sewer permit for it. Like, so there's like a separate permitting process for it. Is there a direction that we have for staff that we've come out of this at this point? Or is that something we want to defer or maybe hold for the public hearing, kind of highlight as a topic of discussion?
I don't, I think I like the idea of making sure it comes, maybe we can highlight it in the public hearing, so that people have a say on it.
Yeah, since it is, it is, it is one of those like substantial new changes that we have from previous codes like that we're introducing here, it seems like a good purpose for a public hearing to sort of summarize what's different from the previous.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that, yeah.
Cool. Nick, I see, has his hand up and I was going to ask more questions, but I think Nick might want to talk.
Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, thanks. So I would, I would say I would want to see more information from staff before this ever got to the, the public hearing stage. We want our ducks in a row before we take this to a public hearing. I share Commissioner Sandoval's concerns. I'd like to see, I'd like to know what exactly code allows for in terms of being allowed to stay in an RV. I thought it was. to stay in an RV. I thought it was not allowed at all, so I was surprised to hear that it's allowed at least for a brief time of year. I think it's a slippery slope, because the city doesn't have the enforcement power to go out there and monitor these RVs. And so I think if you open up the door a little bit, it's just gonna kick, get kicked wide open. I do understand that there is, you know, like say if even somebody's coming back from a trip, you know, being able to deposit, you know, their, their waste, you know, home might be convenient, but I'd like to see how some other jurisdictions are maybe handling this, or what historically our jurisdiction has done. I, I think this could be problematic, and I definitely would like to get more information before it ever made it to the public hearing stage.
That makes sense.
For our code, I believe it's two weeks out of any six month period you can live in an RV on property.
Did you hear that, Nick?
Okay. And then I had another question, kind of going back to the stormwater pollution prevention section, when it comes to section E landfills. I thought it was a recent conversation, but as I started to think about it, I realized it was still back in the old City Hall, so COVID has fried my brain, and apparently it's been a couple of years. But we had some long discussions about bio retention and permeable pavement. And so I saw this little section on the landfills about not allowing bio retention or permeable payment, which what we're trying to encourage, if it's within a certain distance of closed or active landfills. Does the city have any kind of record, or is keeping track of where old landfills were? This is the first time I've ever heard about old landfills.
And, and that's actually part of the reason, I think this is new language, and we were gonna strike it, but then the comment came up in, among staff, is that we don't really know where all of our landfills are, and we need to figure that out. So we, we felt that we should probably have something in here that says that you shouldn't do that if you're on a landfill, until we can verify that we don't have any old landfills, or identify where the old landfills are in the city.
What section is?
Do you have, do you have an estimate of how long that would take to do that research? Or is it just kind of, oh, open-ended, who knows, because, you know, we've never even asked, maybe asked this question before?
So just to be clear, I think we're talking about section 20.13?
Yes.
Yep. And I can get back to you with how long we think that it would take us, or what, what level of effort it would take to identify all that. You know, ultimately, that should be information that we have in our GIS, so that we can share that to future developments. So I'll find out what it will take to, to get that type of information.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I know, you know, the, the two-tiered system between the amount of square footage, you know, that would be covered here, you know, kind of, it's kind of definitely vary with, you know, the type of development, where, where in the city we're gonna see that. And I know, especially with the bio retention, you know, that, that would be part of our goals of, you know, kind of increasing the open space where we can, you know, if it's not an actual park, it's, you know, maybe wider planning strips, and, you know, bio retention kind of plays into that as well, you know, with, you know, swales and whatnot. So I'd, I'd hate to see us having to, you know, end up shooting ourselves in the foot, where we encourage it, but then we're not allowing it in these major areas, because there might have been a landfill at, at one point. So yeah, that'll be interesting.
Yeah, I wanted to build off of Commissioner Batista, do we call him Nick, or Commissioner Batista? I wanted to build off of Nick's point about bioswales, and what I think might be referred to in this document as low-impact development, where instead of, you know, you, you replace some of the capacity that would normally go into the stormwater sewers or whatever with things like bioswales, or green roof, or impervious surface. And to me, that seems like, especially if we're talking about increasing development and possibly increasing a lot of area of impervious surface, like I have, I would, you know, like to see a little bit more information about that. But it looks like there is a section on low-impact development, but it kind of references another document. I saw it when I was skimming, and so I apologize, I don't have a direct section number. But I imagine there's probably documentation somewhere on that. I know there are in like the referencing standards.
In our standard details, we've got some information about the low-impact development and permeable pavements and bioswales. So we've got standard details for it, but I think we, we can make that link stronger between the language and the details. So I'll, I'll add that as something that we'll try to see what we can do to improve that.
Okay. Is that something where somebody using this document would say, I could do either or, I could do, you know, this amount of mitigation, this amount of bio retention, this amount of like feeding things into the stormwater sewers, stuff like that?
I think that's probably more in the stormwater manual. Our standard details are geared more towards if you're gonna do it, this is how you would do it. So, but I'll see what I can find about the type of language you're talking about.
Okay, I think I always like to know how people are gonna use the documents, so it'd be good to know. And then, is there anything, as we're proposing possible rezones, or sub-area plans, or other kind of policies that might wind up increasing the amount of coverage of buildings and hard surfaces and things like that, that would affect this particular document here? And sort of the assumptions that is made about sort of the city's overall capacity to handle stormwater and water quality?
Well, as, as development happens, and as standards evolve, you know, we're gonna continue to make sure that this document complies with the, the latest version of the stormwater manuals and guidance. Meets or exceeds, I guess I should say. So I think that goes back to this being a living document, and we'll continue to, or modify this to meet the demand that we're seeing out there, and the questions that we're getting from the develop, the development community. Again, we get the same questions over and over, and we're always having to stop to, you know, do the same design over and over to give direction to certain developments. And so that's why we're hoping to standardize it, so that people can't shop around for different design standards, and we can be a lot more consistent. So, but again, the ability to evolve, have this document evolve as the standards evolve is one of our key goals.
That's great. Is that something that could be highlighted in the document itself? Say this is something that needs to evolve. I don't, there's probably a more artful way to do it, but to know kind of as we're changing things. So I guess maybe a little bit of context, you know, a lot of times, sometimes I've seen, and so I started my career as an architect in Florida, where you spend a lot of your time doing stormwater management, because it is barely land down there, like you're sizing retention ponds, and they take like 70% of the site in some areas. So as we're like, you know, developing these things, and it's not necessarily all handled on site, it would be good to know, as we're proposing to make changes, like what we need to change as we're changing other things as well. And if, you know, possibly we want to do things like incentivize green roofs, or impervious surface, or pervious surfaces, or, you know, even give allowances for people to do a little more lot coverage on buildings, if they can do some other stormwater mitigation management on site, or, you know, just kind of building tools in the arsenal here. If we have the ability of referencing back to this document and knowing kind of what needs to change over time, as the standards of the city change, and like the zoning documents or other things.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
I would say that's what you need to put in your elements of your comprehensive plan. So for instance, our environmental element, if that's some of your policy and goal language that you want to achieve, then that's where you give that direction.
This is, these are, these are the standards that you implement. So keep the goal and policy stuff out of here. Think of this as we're implementing, and since we're gonna be doing our comp plan and doing all those elements, that's what we want to see there, knowing that any, any standard that we work on is a living document.
Right.
Even our plan is a living document. It should be a living document. There should be no plan that is not living and, and changing with the community. But that's where we want to put those themes in there as part of those goals and policy language, so then we can have direction and go back and say, this is a start. These are some of the other things that we want to achieve moving forward in these documents right here.
Okay. And when we do update that document that sort of lives above this one in the hierarchy, it's an automatic trigger to come back and update this document, and then we know exactly where in the document we need to update.
Yep.
So knowing where exactly in the document we need to update is good.
We can even put, we can even put action steps, which I'm kind of a fan of in our comp plan, that says specifically if there are some things that we want to prioritize, hey, these are some of the things that we want to do next. So we know we're doing our comp plan right now, we're getting some good structure in our standards, and these are some of our priorities after that, that we really want to focus on moving forward. And we can identify what those are.
Okay, yeah.
As the planning commission, yeah.
Yeah, I like that. I think that's, I think that's a good approach. I always like to know within documents sort of how to update the document, and I think in this particular document, since it's like a single document, it might live somewhere else, but like, it would be good to know.
Yeah.
Just kind of be good as a guide. I had one more question, but, okay. Also, I think this is a, you know, this is a good, one other thing I noticed was the, there was sort of a reference to flood zone development, and things that are developed in the flood zone development. I want to say that was in the sanitary sewer guideline, maybe, like you sort of need like backflow preventers and a bunch of other things. I know that development and stormwater standards sort of have a, you know, does, does wind up impacting flood zones. And I was curious if there was a, sort of a flood ordinance, flood zone ordinance that we have in the city that's kind of rolled into part of this, or if this is something that, you know, maybe is part of the standards of that. I know FEMA does publish flood maps of the city, and I'm not sure if we're seeing like the, you know, we've had some recent floods on primarily, I think, Hall Creek. And I don't know how accurately the FEMA maps have predicted the floods that we've seen, and if there might be updates to that in the future, and it might start becoming a more of an issue. And if, you know, this document sort of, I think, says to kind of, you know, work with FEMA, and I wanted to hear sort of, you know, kind of the process of what we're doing with that.
So I don't, I don't know if we have our own flood maps, but I can find that out. Because I know we have had flooding issues at Hall's Creek, and, you know, we've got a couple of project ideas to help address that. The FEMA map is the official one, and that's been recently updated. The, I think that we would be, as part of this document, referencing an official document like the FEMA document. And if we needed to add some areas that FEMA doesn't cover, then that's something that, that we would put in here in order to, you know, go above and beyond what FEMA asked for. So I'll check to see if we've got any areas that we've identified as regular flooding issues, that if we need to address them in here, then we can add a figure or diagram, or, or actually, would that be in the comp plan?
So that's in our critical areas ordinance, and frequently flooded areas is one of the critical areas, along with habitat areas, wetlands, you know, landslide areas, et cetera. So we do use the FEMA maps, like Rich said, they have been recently updated. The, the firm maps tend to lag a little, as we're, as we're aware of kind of some of the things that are going on. But again, as I like to remind people, all of these things, whether it's the national wetland inventory maps, or the firm maps for flooded areas, they're indicator maps, right? Because we're, we're mapping the whole country. And so there's a percentage of accuracy. And that's why we'll have people do critical area reports in addition, depending on the development that we get, to make sure that we're trying to address those environmental concerns on, on different projects that we have. So in part, yes, we do address, we address, try to address all those concerns as we move along.
Okay, so we'd, in, in this case, we would see sort of a parcel by parcel, or project by project analysis of this, and then that would sort of drive what from this is being implemented, in terms of things like backflow preventers, or whatever else needs to be installed?
We have mapping, which is part, so we have in ordinance form for critical areas, and then we also have critical areas mapping. And like I said, that mapping is an indicator. So sometimes, depending on what we're doing, there has to be an assessment, because the map could be correct and say, yep, we, it appears that you have a landslide area, or you have a floodplain designation on here. But sometimes not all the properties in the city have those designations. And so we have different processes that play a part in development when people come in to try to address those, those concerns.
Okay, so that, sort of, this document sort of touches on that, but that document lives somewhere else, then?
Yeah. That's all part of the, the documentation that we use to review any type of development proposal that comes through the city.
Sort of building on that, you know, we're starting to see more extreme weather events, harder rains, things like that. In your opinion, how future-proof is this, and how would we go about making sure that it's, I mean, it's a living document, but, you know, are we reviewing this as we find that, you know, maybe like base rain, or design assumptions about rainwater and things like that change?
Well, we're gonna continue to reference the stormwater manual, which I think takes into account, that's, that's regularly updated. You know, I know that the design criteria evolves as we get more and more hundred-year storms.
Yeah.
But because we're referencing an official document like that, you know, we've, you know, again, we're trying to meet or, or exceed criteria in that, and that document is updated, you know, as more data comes in. So we're following that as our, as our base standard. And by following that, you know, new developments are gonna meet more stringent stormwater code, based on the new information that comes available.
Okay. Thanks. I think that was all my questions.
Anybody else? I had one, one comment, Rich.
Sure.
City monitors, you know, we don't, the amount of land that's available is limited. So, you know, I don't think like detention ponds, or swales, or that, you know, big of an option. I mean, I like to see us, you know, be more, you know, acceptable, you know, to vaults, and, you know, using like sidewalks, you know, or detention and that kind of stuff, you know. So, you know, we do help, you know, because developers, you know, hate giving up, you know, land, you know, because it's, it's, you know, they want it to be so loud. So hopefully, we're, we're open for some of that newer type of, you know, detention and, you know, and cleaning.
Yeah, I, there's the toolbox of tools that are available to address detention, you know, there's a number of them out there. You're right, though, surface areas, we're getting built out to the point that you can't put in more detention ponds. And so, you know, we're putting in. And so, you know, we're putting in detention vaults under the street with the Main Street project. You know, we built the regional facility here so that, you know, we would have something that people could buy into with their development and not have to do it on site. So I think we're trying to look ahead and plan ahead with how much impervious surface that there'll be. And, you know, every chance that we can, we're going to try and encourage LID and try to find ways to both in, you know, detain the water and improve the water quality. And that's some of the stuff that we want to make sure that we cover it in here. Because if we don't have it clearly spelled out, then we're not going to be able to enforce that with the developers that come along. So that's a part of our urgency with getting this in is, you know, with the light rail station, you know, getting close to opening, you know, my prediction is that once that opens, we're going to see even more, you know, people wanting to develop some of the area around the light rail station. And we're already seeing a number of them, so.
Okay, I'm going to go basic on you. What's a detention pond?
When there's a heavy storm event, instead of having all that water race into the system, we'll actually build an air, a basin for it to collect in with a fixed orifice that meters how much water goes out there. And one of the benefits of that is that the people on the downstream end, if all that water came down at once, they would flood. So we detain the water so it releases in a manner that it helps stop the flooding further downstream.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Do we have a sense of whether we want to move forward on this or if we want to revisit it at some point? It sounds like there are several open questions. One is sort of what the differences are. Two is, you know, this sort of the RV dump out thing. I think there were a few other notes in there. And it sounds like there are some things that might need to be gotten back to that. Do we want to revisit this again?
Well, I think on their next presentation, they'll, you know, they'll have, you know, additional comments to or questions. And if they don't get answered, then, you know, we can revisit. But I think that's, you know, they're asking for information from us so they can respond, you know, within that document.
Yeah, that's what I was going to propose is for our next, we'll, I'll bring back the information that we tabled for tonight. And then we can move on to some of the next session or sections that are on the schedule. And I think we'll see how that goes. If it's, if it takes a lot of time, we may have to add one more meeting. But my goal is to bring back, you know, a complete document. And we'll put it out for comment also. And then, then we can have the, the public hearing and stuff after it's had a chance to circulate out there. And then we can look at the document as a whole.
Okay. I like the rhythm of reviewing the thing and then moving on to the next thing. I know you were mentioning streets might be long. But, you know, I, I'm willing to stay a little longer. Hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll get the time allotted. But I like the rhythm of reviewing things and then moving on to the next one.
Okay.
Nick?
You say my name?
Yeah, just wondering if you had any comments or questions before we move on?
No, just, I was just going to say, yeah, you know, usually we've got to give staff at least a meeting or two to be able to formulate an answer to us. And then, and, you know, it was already said that, yeah, if we need more time, we can always say, no, we're not ready for the public hearing and we're going to have to push it out another meeting. Hopefully, it won't get to that. But, yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a tentative schedule. If the questions keep building up, then we'll, we'll have to push the, the public hearing anyway. So I'm fine with having the questions or having, you know, the answers either presented at the next meeting or if it takes the meeting after that, you know, as long as we, you know, have some sort of resolution or game plan before the public hearing, I'm fine.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, then we'll move on to continue discussion of the draft work plan.
All righty. I just wanted to bring this back. And I noticed a mistake today, so I will correct it. It still has 2020 on there. I just changed a couple of things for you guys to take a look at. One, just added, for the plan updates, we have some dollars for a housing study, which we're getting together information for a grant that got sent out today to Washington State Department of Commerce for $125,000 to use for the next two years for our comp plan update. But in addition to that, as part of our RFP and the amount of new information that we're going to need to provide as a city for housing, we've, we've put that we have $75,000 earmarked for a housing study that will be used for our housing element. And that could be used by consultant as part of that RFP for the overall comp plan or we can pull that out either way. But I went ahead and put that in our plan updates. And then another comment that was made is just you folks wanted to see, instead of every six-month development activities report, a quarterly report to update you all on what's going on in the city to keep abreast of that since we changed more to a hearing examiner process for current applications. And we also do a lot of administrative stuff. So just made a couple of those changes. We'll include this in your documents when we have you all do a joint session with the plan or the city council. And Jennifer, do you remember what date it is that we have that joint, tentative joint meeting with city council? Was that March 6th?
On 6th.
Or did, do you remember that? Okay, I'll get back to you on that, on that date. But typically, you guys come and do a joint meeting, present your work plan to the council of what you're going to be working on for the next year. And then we prepare a accomplishments document that just shows some of the stuff that you all worked on last year as part of your work on the commission. So we'll put that together and get you that date for the work plan. But I just wanted to let you know that we did make a couple of tweaks to, to that document. If anybody has any questions or concerns about that, happy to address them. Otherwise, we'll, we'll move forward with that. Okay. And you guys will see your accomplishments document before we go to the, the city council as well, just so you have all those materials beforehand. So if we need to make any changes to that, we can do that as well. Okay, that's what I, that's what I recalled. So March 6th, a joint meeting with council and you all. And my preference is that since it's your, I'll be there, but since it's your work plan, that you folks have an opportunity to sit before the council and present your work plan. I think that's good, so. I'm just here to help.
So that's on a Monday?
Yep, that's on a, is that Monday or is that?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if it was on their work session or their, or their regular meeting date. But yep, on a Monday, March 6th, so, all right, we'll do that. So we'll bring back the accomplishments to you next, next planning commission meeting.
Any questions or comments on? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the director's report.
Okay. Wanted to share a couple of things since Commissioner Payne Donovan was selected to be on the city council. We're in the process of advertising for a commissioner to fill his vacancy. So that advertising, I believe, is going to be going out here.
This week?
Tomorrow. So if you know of someone that is interested, please encourage them to apply for that position as well. And then as part of the work that we're putting together for the major comp plan amendment, to get some consultant help for that, we would like to have one of the planning commissioners selected by you all, if it's possible, to be on that selection committee for that RFP, to pick that consultant group. So we'll get a firmer timeline on that, but just something to consider that if we could have representation by somebody that day to help select a group for that, that would be great. So I will bring back more specifics for you. We should be finished with that effort of really tying down that RFP by the end of this week. So we should have something and dates available at your next meeting. And then we can go over that. And then this Friday, the city will be hosting Congresswoman Delveney here at the city. She will be taking a tour of the city, primarily of the light rail station, Ballenger Park, showing projects that have utilized federal funding and also showing her, the city's plans to secure additional funding for Main Street Phase 2 project. And so we'll be doing that. And then there is a reception over at Diamond Knot where some community folks have been invited and members of council, et cetera, just so we can hopefully be more competitive with securing funding for that major project that we have in the city and trying to get that accomplished. So that'll be happening this Friday, so. And that's all I really have to report for this evening. I'd be happy to answer any question. Oh, I guess I'll add, had, I've had a couple of meetings with Primera, actually, recently just about their overall site plan approval and them moving forward on their buildings on their site, doing their site redevelopment. They are moving forward with their next building of submitting plan permits for, for that. And so we'll, we'll be seeing that moving forward as part of their overall redevelopment. So that's encouraging and hopefully that will move forward as they kind of tackle one building at a time and start moving folks back to the campus, however that turns out for them and kind of how they're shifting their work schedules, et cetera. But anyways, we heard from them, so that was good news as well, so.
On that Primera thing, so they're bringing forward plans for the city staff to review or for the commission to review?
For the city staff.
Thank God.
Yeah.
I'm like, that's going to be a problem?
No, yeah. So it just, that's something that we review internally that was granted approval for the overall site. But because of COVID and people working from home and, you know, all the other stuff, it's been a little slower going of, you know, completing that project. So in understanding how they're moving forward as a employer. So they're, they're trotting along and we're there. And so when they're in process with one of their buildings, we typically have a meeting every two weeks to go over all of their development proposals. So we're in step. So we'll be beginning that process again. I believe they're anticipating coming in within the next couple of months to submit their latest round of permits for that building, so.
Nick, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I would just add, especially for our newer planning commissioners, that any, these type of larger scale projects, even if the commission doesn't end up reviewing it at all, usually staff will still bring it to us as kind of an FYI just so we can see what's in the pipeline and get an idea of, you know, what they're proposing or what's been approved of, even if, you know, they haven't even broke ground on it. You know, a good example is the terror station development. That, you know, they, they, staff brought in, you know, their, the signed off proposals, you know, well before they broke ground just so we can get an idea of, you know, what was going on. So, so, yeah, you guys, we'll, we'll see that from time to time, you know, even if we don't, you know, take any kind of formal vote or, you know, even kind of a advisory, yea or nay, you know, just, just kind of an FYI. And then, yeah, and as another reminder, if there is any kind of personal conflict of interest, though, then feel free to definitely recuse yourself if there is that kind of situation. But, you know, obviously, in this case, there won't be because we're not voting on this at all.
Right on. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay, we'll move on to miscellaneous business. Does anybody want to motion for Commissioner Morgan to be excused?
I'll motion for Commissioner Morgan to be excused.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, so we excuse Commissioner Morgan. And now back to the planning commissioner chair and vice chair. Do we want to go ahead and vote or do you want to wait until Commissioner Morgan is here?
I'm good on waiting until Commissioner Morgan is here. And I'm actually okay with waiting until the next commissioner arrives. It sounds like it might be another month or so.
Yeah, I would imagine, you know, the process of council appoints the commissioner. So, you know, it's up to you folks as how you want to proceed.
Okay. I know since somebody recently graduated, it almost feels like we might want to just be a full body before. I don't know, other people might have other opinions and that's also totally fine. But I'm okay with the current arrangement and for the time being.
I, I agree with Commissioner Petcher. I think waiting might be, I mean, I don't feel super strongly, but I think it might be a good thing to wait until we have a more full set of commissioners to, to sort of vote on that.
Yeah, at least Commissioner Morgan. He might have gotten mixed up at the Five Fridays in January. I think that throws people off. I think Commissioner, I mean Chair Baptiste has something to say.
Nick, do you have your hand up again or is that from last time?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I kind of need to interject here. So city code actually required us to already have had this vote in January. And so we should have already voted. So, and it's on our agenda tonight to do. We can never guarantee that we're always going to have full attendance at a meeting anyway. We've had to vote for chair and vice chair when we've been, you know, just a commissioner is missing for that night. That, that actually ends up happening most of the time. And in the past, we've had to vote for chair and vice chair when we don't have a full body. We've also been in the situation before where we voted when it was someone's very first meeting. And that doesn't do really any... we voted when it was someone's very first meeting. And that doesn't do really any good either, because that person, it's their first meeting. They haven't even gotten the lay of the land. They haven't even gotten their feet wet yet. Yet they're being asked to vote, you know, for someone to run the meetings and someone to be the backup when they don't even know who the someones are, or even what these meetings and meetings entail. So historically, we have never put off voting for chair and vice chair because of either a member is absent or a position is is open.
Good information.
How out of compliance are we?
Was it the January? Is it the first meeting in January? Is that what it says?
I don't have it handy, but I believe it is.
Yeah. So typically, it's done in January at the beginning of the year.
This is annually?
Yes.
It is.
Well, I'm good for voting today. So it's up to.
I don't want to be out of compliance.
Do you want to do we do we want to take a vote to see if we vote, not to not to not to overdo the the regulations here?
Okay, sure. Okay, all those who who want to take a vote today for the for the chair and vice chair, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Well, aye.
Any nays?
Nay, but I lose. So take the vote today.
Okay, so the the yeas win. So we're gonna pick a commissioner chair and a vice chair. So that's good to we have to have to.
Nominations.
Do you take over for this or?
You just opened the floor to nominating for the chair, I believe, first amongst you.
Okay, I open the floor for nomination for the chair.
Can I vote to nominate Chair Baptista again?
Okay, all those in favor of Chair Baptista, I mean, Nick Baptista being chair, say aye.
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 Any nays? Okay, so Nick is a chair again for 2023. So Nick, I'm gonna leave it up to you now.
All right, so I'll go ahead and make a nomination for vice chair. If he doesn't object, I'd like to re-nominate Commissioner Sandoval as vice chair.
You were good to go.
All right. It sounds like we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Post? Hearing none. Commissioner Sandoval has been elected vice chair.
Where's the balloons?
They're not in the budget. Yeah.
Anything else miscellaneous? Anybody have any vacations coming up or?
That's what I was looking for. I forgot about the voting thing.
Okay, if not, then I'm gonna adjourn today's meeting. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Nick.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.